You're on.
I hope you said we're on because I'm gonna go ahead and start. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Hi, everyone, welcome back to our work session for Monday, July 22nd. We, today, we will start with jobs of the week. Sarah, come on down.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sarah Rainey. I am the one-stop coordinator for the Southwest region of the New Mexico Workforce Connection. And we have, all right, for jobs of the week, we have a STEM instructor for the city of Las Cruces. That position starts at $20 an hour and the posting closes on the 19th of August. We also have a Mills delivery driver. The position starts at 15:02 and the posting closes on the 5th of August. For White Sands Missile Range, we have a library technician. The position starts at 63,000. We have a plumber helper laborer for Delta Plumbing and Heating. That position starts at 17 an hour and the posting closes on the 15th of August. We have commodity quotation specialist for Crescent Electrical Supply, starting at $12 an hour, and the posting closes on August 16th. Whoops. We have an accountant senior at NMSU. The position closes on the 17th and the pay is depending on experience. As always, feel free to reach out to us. We have an extended, our extended hours here in Las Cruces, only in our region right now, till 6:00 PM for anybody's convenience to come down for a career consult, anything, any type of career exploration, help with anything that you're needing. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, ma'am.
And special guest doing our pets of the week today, Councilor Corin.
Thank you. I'm not a Game of Thrones fan, but I will, I did get some context before the meeting like I always do. Thank you for having me, Mayor Protam and Council. Let me introduce the cat of the week. His name is Drogon, after the last dragon in existence, I understand. He's also black and red, that dragon in particular, very fancy. I'm not really sure what his special skills are. This is Drogon, the little dragon with a big heart. He may not breathe fire, but he sure knows how to ignite a spark of joy in anyone he meets. His perfect home would be one where he can spread his wings and paws embracing his wild side. His favorite activity is exploring his kingdom and melting hearts. Come meet this fiery kitten, but beware, he may cast his spell on you. So, any, I hope some Game of Thrones fan is out there, just needing a kitten today. The dog of the week this week is Buddy. Life here in the shelter is okay, but I dream of a home where I can be my water-loving self. Nothing gets my tail wagging like a good spray from the garden hose. Chasing and chomping on the water stream brings me uncontainable joy. Why adopt me? Because everyone needs a buddy like me, someone to greet you with pure joy, make each day a little brighter, and have so much water fun. The lake is calling us my future human. And, and I understand that he's an extremely soft-spoken and, and sweet big guy. So, I hope everyone will consider Buddy. The ASCMV also has a few adoption events coming up at the Plaza de las Cruces, this coming Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00. The Girl Scouts are partnering with ASCMV for that adoption event. And we're still in the Red, White, and Cute Adoption Event that's sponsored by Doñana County Humane Society. All adoptions are $50. They already went through all the free adoptions, but the rest of the adoptions for the rest of the month, that's through next Tuesday, I think, are just $50. So hopefully you'll consider it. And the pets of the week, their adoption is always free. Yeah, here are some links you can check out the ASCMV on, they have a new website, ascmv.org, or find them on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, or listen to their podcast Tales From the Paw Side.
Thank you, Councilor Corin, that was great. You did great by Amy De Felix's beautiful bios. She, she does a wonderful job. You did too. All right, on the agenda today, we have two items. And first up is item 3.1, update from Spaceport America. And we will have Mr. McLaughlin, Spaceport Executive Director, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Protam and Counselor. So, I'm very happy to be here. So, thanks for letting me have a little bit of time. I'm gonna try and give you a quick but kind of comprehensive update on what's going on. And hopefully you'll have some good questions. And just a quick little bit about me, I'm born in Albuquerque, raised in Las Cruces, grew, grew up here, graduated from Mayfield, went to New Mexico State, got an engineering degree and met my wife in the pride band. But like a lot of people, I left town, you know, after I worked at White Sands for a while. But I came back about six years ago and I got a job at the spaceport five years ago and have been the executive director for about almost four years now. So, so Las Cruces is near and dear to my heart and the project that is Spaceport America is also near and dear to my heart. So, but very happy to answer some questions. I do have a little bit of our staff here. So Cecilia Vegas is here. She's our coordinator for business development. And Dr. Francisco Polaris, who is our Director of Business Development. And then our, our Public Information Officer, Charlie Hurley. So if you have any other questions, they're here to help answer and, and working really hard on building a spaceport.
Sir, sir, we, we know your staff, we know. So it's just.
I know you know. So, real quick, here's just a couple of pictures. We have, we do have various things that happened. So we had, this is C5, I think that was here not too long ago. And to the right is a space, is a Virgin Galactic flight. But here's what I'm gonna cover real quick. So I'm gonna review, I don't think I've come in front of the council and ever had the opportunity to speak. So I'm glad this finally happened. But I'm gonna review just real quick a little bit about the spaceport. I'm gonna talk about our, our most recent activities. I'm gonna talk about the broader implications of the spaceport with Space Valley and where the space economy is headed in this country and in the world. I'm gonna return back to Virgin Galactic, so you kind of know where they are, their status. And then again, go back to the future of the spaceport. And a last thing is gonna be some economic impact information. So let me review the, the background. So, before 1984, you couldn't build a spaceport, you couldn't even have a private rocket company. So everything that the government did, everything was a federal project. It was either defense or it was civil, or like weather satellites. In 1984, though, there was an act passed that's been amended a few times that finally allowed for a spaceport, a commercial spaceport to exist and for private rocket companies to exist. So very quickly after that, people started thinking about what that means for private industry to be able to build their own rocket or for people to have their own spaceport. So not that long after in the 90s, Physical Sciences Laboratory and other people in New Mexico started looking about where you could build a spaceport in this country, in the state of New Mexico. There were several reports written and a lot of work was done over the 90s, believe it or not, that where, where the site hadn't been picked yet, but the benefits could be seen in terms of economic growth and why we would have competitive advantages. So what happened, though, in the early 2000s was something called Anseri X Prize, which was a, a private contest to see if someone could build a spaceship that would go to space twice in two weeks and then come back down again. And Paul Allen from Microsoft and, and a company called Scale Composites and Mahavi had put together a team and, of course, they won that prize. And very quickly, our governor, Governor Richardson, worked with Richard Branson, Sir Richard Branson, who immediately went to this company and wanted to, to create a spaceport. So New Mexico was primed and ready at that point. We had already had a site picked, but we didn't have, we didn't have a customer, we didn't have a marketplace for it, but we were in the right place at the right time. And other states competed to have that company, Virgin Galactic, come to, come to their area. So, things worked out very quickly. But of course, some legislation was passed. The two counties, three counties actually voted, but Sierra County and Doñana County voted to tax themselves. And so construction began in, I think, 2004, 2005. And in 2006, we actually had our first vertical launch. So here's our statutory mission, just to review, to, to create a spaceport, to attract industries. You know, we're basically a business development project. You know, we're a spaceport, but really our job is to bring in jobs and, and new money into the economy. We also, if another spaceport was, could be built in New Mexico, we'd probably be in charge of it as a state agency. Then, of course, we're here to work on STEM and workforce development. And, and in Las Cruces, that might have meant, for example, that Iowa had a state in Las Cruces instead of eventually leaving, because really White Sands Missile Range is one of the few places an engineer can work in this town. So, building up that economy is part of this. So, here are some of the other spaceports. So, this is an FAA map that gets updated from time to time. And the color coding basically has to do with what are considered private spaceports, what are considered federal spaceports, and what are commercial spaceports. So, if you look in the orange, those are the traditional sites that the federal government had built and operated over the last 60 years. I think one of the early launches in Cape Kennedy was, back then, it was Cape Canaveral was in the late 50s. Of course, we, New Mexico, had Werner Von Braun here at White Sands in, in the late 40s and 50s, but he moved to, he got moved to Huntsville. So we had an opportunity then to be Rocket City, what Huntsville is now. But they have a reentry site right now. Just south of us, a couple hours, two and a half hours south, is where Blue Origin launches, the, and the New Shepard system. So everybody's probably watched that on TV or, you know, that has the capsule. And then Boca Chica, way south of us, is another what's called a private launch site. And that's where SpaceX built their own little area and did it rather quickly. And there was a recent article in the San Antonio, I think, Express, a very interesting article about how SpaceX essentially built this facility very quickly, maybe avoided a lot of environmental concerns. But that's not the way we did it, that's not the way New Mexico did it. We went through quite a bit to get our spaceport built. But the point in the showing this is that this is all there is right now. There are other spaceports in the work. Michigan have been trying, has been trying to work, build one. I don't think that's gonna happen. Maine has been trying to work on one. I don't think that will happen. There's probably half a dozen or more other states working on their own spaceports. But when you look at those locations and you look at our location, we actually have some important competitive advantages. And so here's a slide to explain that. So, let me see if the cursor works. So, you're probably familiar with the outline here of White Sands Missile Range, which is the largest testing range in the, in the United States. You know, and it's been there since the 40s. If you look at the blue here, that's the airspace that White Sands Missile Range controls. And the little bit down here is our 18,000 acres of state trust land that is owned by the state of New Mexico. And that's part of what makes us so unique, that when they look for a place to put the spaceport, they're able to find this land that belonged to the state and it's underneath this airspace. And so that gives us a huge advantage in being able to support some of our customers and launch. Of course, our other, our other competitive advantages are actually the high elevation, the no-salt air, this remote location with a low population density. And, and we're able to use White Sands assets. So we have an MOA with White Sands Missile Range. So if a customer, one of our customers wants to use radar or telemetry or weather, we can work with White Sands. So unlike a lot of those other spaceports on here, we're being right next to a military range actually is a benefit for us most of the time. Here's what the 18,000 acres looks like. I think some of you have been out there, but if anybody hasn't been out there, we're always happy to schedule a tour. So, I won't go over this in depth, but just to say that our 18,000 acres are divided into the horizontal launch area where Virgin Galactic operates, a vertical launch area where we host the vertical launches, and an advanced technology area where we're trying to put customers that kind of don't fit either of the above. But we're also looking at how to expand some of the lands out there. A lot of, most of this land is BLM land, but there's also state land. And long-term, we need to expand a little bit to be able to host some of the customers we want to host. So, let me go over some of the activities. We, right, right now, we have seven tenants. Three of them are what are called High Altitude Platform Systems. So a High Altitude Platform System is a very large UAV that can fly at 60,000 feet and above. And we've turned into a location where we have three of those major developers. One of them, we're talking to pretty intensely about manufacturing in the area, which would be a really long, good, long-term benefit for, for all of us. The US Thunderbirds have been now doing their winter training there for the last three years. We do lots of other small UAV tests. We've done some rocket engine tests. As just an example of a small customer, the US Military Academy, West Point, has, comes out here and flies rockets every year. And of course, Virgin Galactic flew seven times commercially in the last year. So that's, ultimately, that was, you know, the big part of where we were headed. And that finally happened with the Virgin Galactic. We're also talking to a data center developer, satellite ground station, and a single-stage-to-orbit providers, which will be kind of a next phase of getting to orbit. And I'll talk about that a little bit in a second. Here's just a few more. Let's see if there's anything new on there. One important thing we do as part of our mission is a lot of STEM outreach and giving site tours and trying to encourage workforce and folks to stay in, in New Mexico. We've done some electric car testing out there as well. So here's, here's a quick look at what that looks like. Down here in the lower left is this 300-foot wingspan HAP system, the High Altitude Platform System. So it's covered in solar panels, has 10 electric motors and can fly 60,000 feet to 80,000 feet and is designed to do that for six months at a time. And we have three of those developers. So another one over here is Prismatic, and I think the one above it is Swift. And then we have Spin Launch, Vertical Launches, and then Virgin Galactic. And the Spaceport America Cup is on the left. Here's a quick look at Air of Ironman again. Again, this, this picture was taken a few years ago. We have a newer picture, but this is what this thing looks like. There's no tail rudder, there's no fuselage, it's just one giant wing. They're trying to get this FAA certified and then their plans are to have hundreds and hundreds of these that can fill in around the globe for surveillance, for telecommunications, cellphone tower in the sky. So this is a really cool thing. They built their own facility out there. They spent about $8 million about three years ago. And when they're flying this thing, they have somewhere between 40 and 60 people in town. And again, we're hoping for a long-term presence from them. Prismatic is similar. It's kind of hard to see what we're looking at, but the camera's at the very end of the wing and it's looking down at the fuselage. And so it's also flying, I think, about 65,000 feet. So there's another High Altitude Platform System. So getting back to Virgin Galactic, they had seven space flights between June, last year and this year. So those were commercial flights. So what they proved for a little while, you might remember that you saw in the paper for about three or four months in a row, that they flew once a month. And then those were commercial flights. So they had gotten all their, everything approved by the FAA. They had passengers, paying passengers, and they had payloads on there. So, what they are gonna do, though, is they've decided that they are not gonna fly for about 14 months. They're gonna work on what's, what they're calling the Delta Class of spaceships. So this spaceship, the VSS Imagine right here, they're going to retire that, although they may fly it again. But they're gonna put all their resources into the new spaceships. And the new spaceships, you can go on their website to look, I put that down here. But the new spaceships are gonna be a little bit lighter, they're gonna use some advanced construction techniques, and they're gonna hold six passengers at a time. And when they come back with two new spaceships, their intent is to fly 100 flights a year. So that's gonna be very big for Las Cruces to finally have that regular cadence. One thing we signed with them recently was a letter of intent for what they're calling a launch hangar. So this will be a facility they build out at the spaceport with their own money. It's a lease of about 85 acres. And the idea is that they'll be able to keep that cadence up by using a launch hangar rather than fueling out in the runway is what they currently do. Another activity at the site, here's, here's about almost 2,000 students and participants of the Spaceport America Cup. So I don't know how many of you know about the Spaceport America Cup. So it's the world's largest now intercollegiate aerospace contest. So we have about 2,000 people that come to the city of Las Cruces. This is in the convention center parking lot, which by the way, the convention center is not big enough for the expansion that, that our partner here, the Experimental Sounding Rocket Association, would like to have. So we're, we're kind of crammed in there, but you can see all the different flags. We have about 30 different countries. I think we have 35 states. And again, 2,000 people that are in Las Cruces for a week. A lot of them come a few days early and they go around the southwest or they stay late. And all of them are beginning to know what Las Cruces is, what New Mexico is, what the spaceport is. So this is, you know, probably one of our largest business development efforts. We actually have, a lot of these students have come back and done testing at the spaceport. So it's a huge benefit to Las Cruces and the spaceport. And it fills a big part of our STEM and workforce mission. So, and we encourage UTEP, New Mexico State, New Mexico Tech, and UNM all participated. And we have a special prize for them called the Chili Cup. And UNM won the Chili Cup this year. They were the top local school. And our intent is to get other schools involved, like Navajo Tech or Eastern University. So we're working on that this year. And here, if you look on the right, you can see the sponsors. And I'm sorry, that was 22 countries, but you can see the sponsors. And a lot of these, you may not realize it, but they're name-brand sponsors. These are the folks who are doing big things in the industry. And they're all getting to know what Las Cruces is and what Spaceport America is. And here's a little tidbit, our 4.84 million of earned media on, on this. So again, if you were to go and enter Spaceport America Cup in Google and just see what comes up, you will get stories, if you click on the news or the YouTube, you will get stories all across the world of students who came here because their local news stations report on their big trip. One of them was Philippines. And their big win this year was that they simply qualified, that the rocket passed all of their safety inspections. And that was big news back in the Philippines. So, uh, let's see. And then we do a tremendous amount of STEM and workforce. Charlie especially and some of our other staff are constantly, they go to the middle schools or they bring students out, again, trying to beat into them that, you know, they can stay in New Mexico, that STEM is a good career. And it's not just STEM, it's anything about having to do with business, you know? You need, you need business majors, you need marketing people, you need HR people. All right, so let me move ahead just a little bit. So Space Valley is a term that some of us have invented. And, and we started this by working on a couple of grants. So a grant was almost four years ago now, three and a half years ago, was the Build Back Better Grant that, that President Biden put in action. So a bunch of us on this list formed a little coalition and we worked on that grant. We didn't win the first prize, but we won the second prize, which helped keep Space Valley up and running. But you can see the list of, of folks involved. And, and the reason I point this out and the reason so many of us in Albuquerque are pointing this out is because if you really sit down and you look at our region and you look at the resources we have and the ability to support aerospace and space, there's very few places in the country like this. There just aren't. You can't go to Kansas and find this, you're not gonna find it in Nebraska. Colorado does great. Texas is doing great. But really, our region from Albuquerque to El Paso is unique, but we're not pulled together. And that's been the problem. And so giving it a name, calling it Space Valley, and starting to focus on how to fill out the ecosystem that we need to build that ecosystem is a big part of it. And this is a big opportunity for us. If, and what makes it really unique is the fact that we have an active licensed spaceport. If you, if you look at the other regions that have a lot of components of this economic engine, you know, this economic cluster, they don't have a spaceport. They can go to space eventually. And one of the things we're working on is to go to orbit. We're looking for that next customer, that next client, probably in 10 or 15 years, that's gonna be able to come to New Mexico and go to orbit from New Mexico. And that's transformational for the region. You can't go to orbit unless you can do payload processing, you can do rocket processes, you can create commodities that you have a workforce. A lot has to happen between now and then. And the reason I call it the opportunity for Space Valley is it really requires us to work together. It requires Las Cruces and Albuquerque and El Paso to really start pulling together to figure out what's missing in the ecosystem. We need investors, we need the workforce, we need everything to try and pull that together. And we have that possibility. Spaceport is a part of what makes it a realizable thing because, again, we can go to space. So with Francisco's help, we've done a lot more in our side trying to cooperate with other local EDOs, Economic Development Organizations. So when they go to a show, we provide literature for them and we educate them on how to talk about it. When we go to a show, we do the same thing. So a lot more of us are working together on how we can build up this region for aerospace and space. And the reason this makes sense is, part of the reason this makes sense, is the global space economy. We're in the beginning stages of what the internet was like 25 years ago or so. The growth in aerospace and space is hard to explain. I don't know if any of you have HBO Max, but there's a new series on called The Wild, Wild Space. Have anybody seen that or heard about that? If you, if you have HBO Max, I suggest you watch it. They discuss the space race we're in. And this is a space race for the economy, for how people are gonna get to space. Everything we do is related to space now, you know? Whether it's farming, whether it's all our, our monetary transactions, all of our communications, of course. But something has been happening in the last 15 years that is exploding the space market. And we're in the middle of that. Spaceport America and our region can be in the middle of that. So I put these up there and invite you to go look at, you know, do your own Google searches and find out. Here's some other, we get, all of us in the spaceport get various newsletters. Space News is a great one. If you look around, you'll just find case after case after case of needing more room at spaceports, of companies trying to go. Governor Abbott, you may not realize, they voted on a $350 million package for what they're calling the Texas Space Commission. A big chunk of that is going to Texas A&amp;M, but the rest of it is going to build either other spaceports or to improve infrastructure. And they're realizing that economic gains of being involved in space are huge. So, again, I invite you to kind of do your own looking around on Google and news and, and just look for space growth or commercial space. And, and here's another good example. So this is the number of orbital space launches worldwide. So way down here at the bottom, 1957, I think it's October 10th, is when Sputnik launched. And I have, I placed these incorrectly, but the last, you see where the Cold War was. So a lot of space-to-orbit launches took place. And then we went down over time, and I can barely read this. But here's 2006, very much at the, at the bottom is about when the spaceport started. And then to the right of that, again, I placed these in the wrong place. SpaceX, which is now dominating the market with about 90% of the launches in the world, had their first launch. And then just after that, we had the end of the Space Shuttle project. But if you look at the number of orbital launches, I had to add the little orange bar here for 2023. And if you look where it's gonna go for 2024, it's, it's kind of going crazy. Again, this is, this is just like the beginning of the dot com or the beginning of the internet. And we're just in that new era. And luckily, New Mexico is in a place where we can take advantage of that. Over here on the right, I have some other rocket launch providers who you're gonna hear about over the next few years. Blue Origin, of course, is owned by Jeff Bezos, Amazon founder. Rocket Lab has had, I think, 50 or 60 successful launches, a whole bunch of them from New Zealand, believe it or not. But they're building a big facility in Wallops Island, Virginia. And then these other smaller ones are gonna compete. What we're trying to do is find out which one of these or what new competitor can come to New Mexico and launch from New Mexico. And that's gonna be a hard sell for a while because their rocket system is gonna have to be safer than when you launch over the ocean. To launch over people, you have to have a rocket system that's gonna be able to abort and maybe have a parachute or just some different things. Those are technologies that we're capable of, but nobody has developed them yet. We're working with our federal delegation to help develop something with the Space Force or somebody else that would create that marketplace. Because all of these sites I showed you before, Vandenberg and the Florida sites are vulnerable to earthquake. to earthquake, hurricane or an adversary coming in and wiping out the spaceport. So believe it or not, DoD interest and being able to conduct inland launches is a very high priority. And we're really the number one spaceport to help that happen. Very quickly going back to Virgin Galactic, I mentioned that they're going to have two new spaceships, somewhere around 100 launches a year, we expect in the next 18 months or so. These are passenger flights, some will have payload. That means there'll be about 600 new spaceflight participants, which is what the FAA calls them, spaceflight participants and/or astronauts. That would mean about 12,000 visitors to Las Cruces, maybe 60,000 room nights. So I think that's a pretty big number, it's something we should be excited about. I don't know whether we have that much hotel space. And if they were to go to four to five spaceships, which is in their plan, 300 to 400 flights a year, using just a simple multiplier, we're talking about 180,000 room nights in my estimate. That's back of envelope calculation. Now, we all know that it's taken quite a while for Virgin to get this far, but they're still at it, they're still with us, we're still partnered. So we're going to keep supporting them and I think they're going to make it there. The way I come up with those numbers is each spaceflight participant has, what we found and Virgin has told us, is about 20 friends and family on average come with whoever's going to fly in the, in the spaceship. So these are big things. Now, Virgin Galactic is focused on something that is called space tourism and believe it or not, there's a whole society dedicated to that, the Space Tourism Society. And what that looks like in this simple representation is going to space is at the very top. Watching a movie or doing an earth-based simulation is at the bottom and that pyramid means the number of people who are participate. So at the bottom, you have a lot of people participating, at the top, you don't have very many. And to be more detailed about it, using, looking at the same pyramid, here's all the activities that this society, the Space Tourism Society, likes to talk about in terms of space tourism. And the reason I bring that up is because when you bring as many people to town as we're talking about for Virgin Galactic, those people need something to do. And that means there's opportunities for business people in Las Cruces to come up with other activities. So when those people spend a week here in town, they're also doing other things in town. And I think Las Cruces has been behind in thinking about this. El Paso, of course, is, is where the people stayed to go fly on the, on the Blue Origin capsule in Van Horn, Texas. But both of us should be thinking in terms of what happens when those people who are interested in space come to town and have that one person actually go to space. So this is just something to think about. There actually is something called the Space Tourism Convention or Conference that we've participated in the past, we'll probably go again. But as we learn more about how to promote this, we'll bring it back to you. And I'll give you one example would be an immersion tank. And that's a tank kind of about the size of this room where they project on the sides of the tank, space. They put you in a suit and then you go down and you float. And that's a profitable undertaking in other parts of the world. But I'm not saying that that's right for Las Cruces, but that's the sort of things that space tourism can happen and that's the sort of thing where Las Cruces could start looking at how do you work together with Virgin Galactic and all those other people coming to town? Conferences and media, and I bring that up because the Spaceport America brand is pretty well-known throughout, throughout the world now. And we have people who want to come to the spaceport. We're building a new building soon that will be able to support some meetings and things out there. But people like coming where the space activities occur, they like to go watch a launch. And we built a viewing lot out at our site for Virgin Galactic launches mostly and also anybody who wants to see things. And we get about 20 to 40 cars every time there has been a launch from Virgin Galactic. And a lot of those people were out of town. I went and talked to those folks and a lot of them came out of town just to watch a launch. So let me, I'm almost at the end here, sorry. A future Spaceport America in the region. So again, space tourism as a hub, we need to think about what that means. Orbital launches and reentry. So we have a capability for vertical and horizontal launch as part of our launch license. That's not just suborbital. If we get a customer who wants to go to orbit, they can do that. It just means that the FAA has to okay it as part of their application to FAA. But we're also working on a reentry license. So an orbital reentry license, I don't know how many of you are aware, you've probably heard about the Boeing capsule, kind of a debacle a little bit. Of course, it's already landed twice at White Sands Missile Range and sometime in the next few weeks, it's going to fly over Las Cruces again and land in White Sands Missile Range, just one more part of what we're trying to call Space Valley. I went out the very first time it came out and I could hear the sonic boom as it flew over us. So watch for when it comes in and make sure you're outdoors and you might be able to hear it as well. But we are working on orbital reentry, there's other vehicles, I'll talk about one in a minute. And the bottom here, a port city. So that sounds very out there, but if you think about what's happening in space, if you think about the amount of commodities that are going to have to go to space in the next 20 years, we're talking solar panels, people, food. Right now, there are people being born who are going to work in a hotel in space, they're going to fly up in space, they're going to work in the hotel for a week or two and then they're going to come home again. This is what's happening up there and what's happening around us. We can have a part of that. And when I say a port city, I really mean that, the idea that countries and regions built ports, usually a government expense for the sole purpose of bringing in commerce and industry. And we are a port, especially if you combine that what's going on in Santa Teresa and other parts south. It's something unique, again, that no other region really has an ability to support. So here's our reentry vehicle, we signed an MOU with Sierra Space a couple of years ago. They may launch this year, it's starting to get a little bit doubtful, but this would fly up on a rocket vertically and then it comes down horizontally. And what's interesting about Sierra Space is this, this first vehicle, which this is not an accurate representation, but I put it there because they're landing on a runway that looks like ours. The first vehicle is just going to be a cargo vehicle. The, the next vehicles will be human rated and then further vehicles will be factories in space. So one of the big things that's happening in space is the ability to manufacture in space. And the first capsule that ever did that was launched by a company called Varda last year and it came down recently safely. And that, when it went up, it was able to do things in space in terms of manufacturing, mixing things together that can't be done in gravity. So that is going to be a new, whole new business model where something like this vehicle and other vehicles get launched, they manufacture up in space and they have to land. We're trying to become a prime landing area for that activity. And again, that makes us part of that, that thinking of us as a port. So really, in the long term, what we're looking for is customers and growth. We're continuing to expand facilities, not faculties, but facilities. You know, one of the things about the companies we deal with is they're, they put all their energy into the technology, all their money, all their resources and the technology they're developing. They don't really have money to go build a hangar or to go put in a water line. It's very similar to the industrial park that I know Las Cruces has been working very hard on for a long time. You have to put stuff in the ground to attract people to come. They don't have time and money to put it in the ground themselves. So we are building a new hangar. According to Francisco, we'll probably have that leased out almost full-time very quickly. And then we'll probably try and put in another hangar and we're also putting in some roads. But getting the facilities and getting ready for customers to come in is a big part of it. Again, Virgin Galactic is putting in a launch hangar that will, at their own expense, and that's 85 acres that they're going to rent from us, lease from us, that we lease from the state land office, that will increase our revenue and less reliance on our state funds. We're, we're working very hard with our federal level partners and there is a lot to that in, in looking, in looking at inland space as a, as an inland spaceport as a place to launch going forward. And then working all across with the city of Las Cruces and all of our partners in Albuquerque and El Paso and the region to keep promoting the area as a place where entrepreneurs can locate and where companies can locate. And that's the hard thing, as we all know, there's an article this morning in the Business First and Albuquerque Journal, not Business First, but Albuquerque Journal Business Page, and I think there was one last week, it's going to be a series about why New Mexico has been hard, it's hard for businesses to stay or locate in New Mexico. And that problem of, of why New Mexico has had stagnant population growth and is not considered business friendly is again, something we all have to work on. It doesn't do any good to try and build up the spaceport if only Albuquerque or only Las Cruces is helping or the state does a few things. We all have to work together on that. And then just two more slides, I think. We did do an economic impact in 2022 and so here's some stats on getting that done. That was done by MSU Border Economic Development, SEBED, who also did one for the border. So this was independent, we helped them gather the data, but they did all the analysis themselves. And of course, we were looking at new money, indirect and indirect and induced jobs. So what we found was we had, in 2022, we had 811 jobs that are associated with the spaceport. And we like to look at value added, the new money, we had $60 million of new money that was brought into the economy. So that's $60 million that would not have come into the region, into the state if not but for the spaceport. We also tried to calculate the visitor today's nights, that was 9,000. And the overall construction at the spaceport was 12 million and that's, that's averaged about 10 million a year. 2023, we're working on that report now. I think this will go up for 2024, will probably go down a little bit because of Virgin Galactic taking a break. But we're going to try and put this out every year. We also gave you a copy of the annual report, we're trying to put in an annual report every year, so hopefully you can review that at, when you have some, a few minutes. And then lastly, we are, we haven't had an open house in a while, so we're going to have an open house September 8th. Very welcome to come out, we're going to have two different times that we try and get people out and kind of run two different programs where it will be a STEM event, we're allowing to be a fly-in. Virgin Galactic, our partner, will have the hangar open, you'll be able to see the spaceship and they'll teach you a little bit about their future. But you get to stand out on the apron and you get to see the big gateway to space building behind us. So I think that's it. There's, be happy to have any, and see, I didn't get Cecilia's name on there because I forgot she was going to come, but, but very happy to take any questions, Mayor Protem and Councilor, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Am I saying that correct?
Yes, thank you.
I can't, Counselor Flores is your, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. What, is this in your brain?
Yeah, I couldn't tell your light was on.
Ah, pardon. Okay. So what I would like to have seen, since the city of Las Cruces and the county of Doña Anna have contributed, I would have liked to have seen a breakdown as to the benefits for our city. You, you talked a lot about, you presented a lot of information of what's to come if we do this. This will happen if we do that. What to date has been the benefit for our people? You showed the employment of, I think, whatever it is, 800, whatever. But it doesn't break it down to how many are from Las Cruces, from the New Mexico area? Are they from the El Paso area? And with all due respect to Texans, I, you know, our, my interest is to see how much benefit our city has received, our county has received. You didn't present that information. And you, so that was, that was very disconcerting for me. And then, you know, you, you had all these other data and whatever, but it really didn't pinpoint, you're talking about how many people come in when the youth come in and there's so many beds that are going to be needed and this, that and the other. But we don't have a breakdown of how much money that really brought in. Presumably, it brought in a few bucks relatively speaking. But I think part of your pitch today, with all due respect pitch, your presentation is to probably ask the city for more money. And so I just, I just want to know what the tit for tat is, I mean, just bottom line. And I, I don't know if you have it, I don't know if Dr. Bayadis would have it. It'd be good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, Counselor, so we also handed out the full economic impact report. And so the statistics for Doña Anna County and Sierra County are actually in there. The way that, the way the economic impact report calculates where those jobs are, we think is, is not as accurate as it could be because the people work in Sierra County, so those are counted as Sierra County jobs. But we all know from those of us who work at the spaceport, most of the people who work at the spaceport right now live in the city of Las Cruces. So those numbers are in there. We're going to do a better job of improving the fidelity of those numbers. But that table I showed you, this table, there's a similar table in, in the report for Doña Anna County and for Sierra County. And some other statistics about what, what exactly we're trying to get out. And, and I realize that, you know, this is the, the first really kind of detailed economic impact that's been done by the spaceport, you know? And so we're going to do this every year. So your questions, Dr. Plaris heard them and we're, again, we're adding fidelity to the 2023 economic impact report and we'll make sure those questions are answered in there.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Any members of the public? All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Go ahead, Counselor Flores.
Okay. So you say, you said, Mr. McLaughlin, that there is, that we have federal partners?
Where, we, I'm sorry.
Who are the federal partners?
Go ahead.
No, no. Who are they and how do they play in terms of the revenue sharing?
So Counselor Flores, of the spaceports, the commercial spaceports, the, the traditional federal spaceports are still receiving and have received federal funds for decades and they're continuing. And of the commercial spaceports, there's almost no federal money that has gone to any spaceport, any commercial spaceport. So when I'm talking about our federal partners, I'm talking about our delegation, our senators and our representatives who I'm working with and others are working in to make sure that we are starting to get infrastructure funds to build out the spaceport so we can support things like the US Space Force launches and also just to help the United States compete worldwide. Because the graph I showed you with orbital launches and some of the other things that are happening is not just the United States, that included the rest of the world, which is also moving very quickly towards space. So trying to get our support on the federal side is, is a big part of what we're working on right now.
And have you presented to the county, to the county commission?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
For your time.
Mayor Protem, if I, I just thought of a question.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, it's very difficult, your presentation, because a lot of it is the future. And when we developed the referendum for the spaceport back in 2004, it was quite a hard sell because, you know, Richard Branson, the spaceport. But our council, I think, had that vision. And I think a lot of the impact that, that you're going to have in the spaceport is futuristic, but it's actually where we're going. In other words, when you see the spaceports in other cities and how many have developed, we realize that's space tourism. And maybe Chris could put something together that would be very easy to read when the lodges tax, you know, when people are staying in hotels and you're looking at 1,000 to 1,500 people staying in our hotels, that's quite a benefit to the city of Las Cruces from the lodges tax and what we support, our convention center and other things, visit Las Cruces. So I think there's a lot of things that are, that are very good, but it's very hard to see because it's a space. And so thank you for your presentation and, and I, I think you'll see, you know, you're young enough, you're going, you're going, you're going to see the, the futuristic benefits of the spaceport probably and at least, I think it'll be very dramatic once Richard Branson, they take their break and they develop the new spaceship. I think you'll see the tourism quite, increase quite a lot in 14 to 18 months. So thank you for the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you. Certainly hope you're right, Counselor Matisse, as maybe more skeptical on this vision person, but certainly hope you are right because it was a large investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Item 3.2, City Strategic Plan and Invisio Public Dashboard. And we have Mark Miller and Shrijana. Shrijana, I spaced your last name completely just now.
Basnet.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor Protem and City Council. I am Shrijana Basnet, the City Innovation and Strategy Administrator, or so they call So today, we're here to present the Invisio Strategic Planning Platform for you all and very briefly, the presentation is going to be divided into these three topics. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background, city strat plan or strategic plan, and then hand over to Mr. Mark Miller to go in-depth on the actual Invisio platform and the public dashboard. So of course, most, if not all of you are familiar with the city of Las Cruces Strategic Plan. This is our short to midterm plan. And we update it every two to five years, depending on council's wishes. And right now, our strategic plan has a planning horizon of five years. It's roughly divided into six themes with the addition of some very specific council goals. And most of the goals in the strategic plan come directly from Elevate Las Cruces, which is our comprehensive plan. So the one thing I want to do today is take this opportunity to give you all a little bit of background and context on the why and how we're here today, especially for the new councilors. And then for those of you who are familiar with this strategic plan and our comprehensive plan, this will serve as a little bit of a refresher as we prep for the city strategic plan update. So Las Cruces is an inclusive community. That is the one thing I'm going to kind of point your attention to today and stress on. Because what we are trying to do with this platform speaks to that specific directive in our vision statement. This vision statement, of course, was crafted through years of public engagement. We do have a comprehensive plan that had engaged thousands of members of our community, focus groups, stakeholders. And then in, at that time, the mayor and city councils judgment, they wanted to honor that input and that engagement. And so most of what you see in our current city strategic plan was directly brought in from the Elevate Comprehensive Plan. So this is the rough overview of the planning framework for Las Cruces. We have our regional plans, and they inform us. We, as a municipality, engage in the creation of those regional plans as well so that they take our input into consideration. And so we have these more regional-focused planning documents that guide us and tie the more wide-spanning issues in our region. We then have our city's comprehensive plan. That's our long-range plan, and it is comprehensive for a reason. We do tend to, if we don't carefully weigh all of the policies together, with different perspectives and lenses working together, there is a potential to miss out and have gaps in our policy framework. And there can be unintended consequences of specific policy adoption, even with the best intentions. So it's all about the legwork, the data that went into that, the information that was gathered, and then how it directs the city and guides us in terms of growth management and the future for the next 25 years. So the policy plans, there are several of them in the city, and all of them are adopted by the city council. There are a few technical plans that the departments use for specific internal work. But really, when we refer to technical plans, we are referring to the ones that are actually adopted by city council. For example, the Parks and Rec Master Plan would be one of those. And then we have our implementation tools. So we do the planning, we do all the community engagement, we have a plan that you all adopt. And then it is directed by the city manager to staff to go ahead and implement that plan. So we have the budget, the municipal code that gives us regulations, and we have the CIP that will actually implement, or the Capital Improvement Plan that will implement the comprehensive plan's physical framework. But we also have our strategic plans. So the city's strategic plan is both a planning tool and uniquely also an implementation tool. Because it will take that long-range plan and it will put it in focus for staff and for the community to know what our priorities are. So a little bit of the how. Part of the frustration in planning for years for people who come to our meetings, who provide input, is that they don't necessarily see, and we don't as staff necessarily see, the implementation happening quickly and effectively. Why? Because something gets lost in translation between the plan and the actions. So planning and implementation is a line of business that was newly created just a couple of years ago to meet that transition gap. So how do we take these goals and these far-reaching visions and translate them into day-to-day action items? So part of what the Invisio platform does is help us manage our plans and report on and see the progress. So we're able to prioritize, to course correct, and to let you all and the general public really track and monitor what is happening with the goals that you all have set for us. Part of this, and I won't go too much into detail on this because Mark has a full presentation for you, but part of the prioritization really helps city staff see the value in operationalizing these goals. So when do we start an action item? What are the resources available to us? How do I, as a department director, plan and program my staffing, my priorities within the department to meet these lofty goals? So everybody has to be working together, but also know what are the issues and be able to bring that to the attention of city management. So in order for any plan to be successful, you need both external and internal buy-in. External buy-in, hard fought, we did the outreach, we did the network, and the community embraced the city comprehensive and strategic plans. Internal buy-in is about the bureaucracy, the technocrats, the staff, really embracing these policies and saying, we are here to make this happen. So how do we go about doing it? Because we have to get the work done. This is one way we make all of that work transparent and rewarding and hold people accountable. So it's not to blame or punish, it's to really track what is successful and what is not. So hopefully, when you see the public dashboard, you will recognize it for its value in also helping the policymakers in order for you all to be a little bit more strategic. You can hone in on certain things. What is the topic that you are making a policy on? Are there related actions? Have we progressed on that? Are there things that you need to add as resources? Is management asking for that? So there's so many strategic conversations that can happen once we have something like this in place. So with that, I'm going to thank you all for your support so far. I want to thank the city manager, who is our executive sponsor for Invisio, and all of the department staff who have worked so hard in helping make this a success, and hopefully it will be. Mark Miller, Lead Planner.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mark Miller, for the record, interim lead planner with Planning and Implementation. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit more specifically about Invisio, walk you through what the platform is, what it does, what it's capable of, and then specifically get into the public dashboard, the city strategic plan public dashboard, and actually bring it up on screen and walk you through it. Some of you may remember, we did do a little kind of sneak peek at the CIP retreat this past year. So some of that will be a little bit of repeat information. But at that time, it wasn't live to the public, and it wasn't all filled out with the true information, right? So first off, what is Invisio? It's a plan management tool. But when I say plan management, it's everything from actually displaying the plan, storing those recommendations in one single spot for staff to access internally, and where we can compile, gather progress information, updates from city staff, and then subsequently report it out in a few different ways. In terms of features, we can actually put unlimited plans into there. We have automated reporting internally that we can leverage. It does have analytics, meaning we can, we can visualize performance measures, show, you know, different specific targets on those visualizations. We can do dashboards. Obviously, we're talking about one of the planned dashboards today. But it also has analytic dashboard capabilities that we can use both internally and externally. Overall, it's intended to manage plans more efficiently, increase transparency and accountability, and be a reporting tool. But bottom line, it's to help us improve our implementation of the plans. I think one key thing that I want to highlight is that decentralized approach that Invisio gives us. Staff are able to actually get into the platform and be assigned as an owner of specific recommendations within our plan. So any given action within the Elevate Las Cruces Comprehensive Plan, which is 500-plus actions, there's a specific staff member who actually owns each one of those actions now and is responsible for providing the updates. Of course, they're not solely responsible. They have to work within their departments, interdepartmentally, with their department leadership. But at the end of the day, we have owners and contributors identified. And so we're used to, it's kind of difficult for some staff to understand where their day-to-day operations kind of fit in the overall planning framework. Now, it's far more accessible to say, oh, this is where my X, Y, Z day-to-day activities contributes to these big-picture overarching goals and our plans. I think that's a really, really key strength of this platform that we've gotten good feedback on so far. This graphic just kind of gives an overall picture of the process, capabilities that Invisio has. We're able to define, collect, visualize those analytics. We're able to display the plan link and show that cascade of theme, goal, action at the bottom level. I will say about this graphic, it puts analytics just a bit before plan, but in reality, these are kind of working in concert with each other. Once we have those set up, we can report on it regularly. We can push out a lot of internal reports to city management, to department leadership, and then ultimately to the public dashboard. One key thing throughout this, this process that's listed there is that the platform and each of these steps is intended to facilitate those strategic decision-making conversations or thought processes. This is kind of just a bird's eye view of our implementation of the software. I won't go into each one in a lot of detail. But suffice to say, these, these items began, you know, a little over a year ago at this point. We have 179 users as of the 18th of this month, which is a huge amount of users in this platform. It was a multi-multi-month process to get the software set up, get everyone trained up on it, build our, build out our actual plans in the platform in a way that works for us, then subsequently operationalize all of those actions, all 500 of those actions. So defining priorities, owners, contributors to it, start and end dates, checklist items, more discreet things that we can tackle to try to chip away at a, at a complex action. All of staff did a first round of updates to all 500 actions. We built out the public dashboard. It's now public. It's launched. And then also building out a reporting framework internally. So me mentioning all of these things is really just to give staff, of course, P and I staff credit, but the organization as a whole and city management, there's a huge amount of work. How we're approaching, what Invisio allows us to do is different. It's a different way of interacting with our plans. It's a different way of thinking about our plans. And that's difficult to do such an effort organization-wide. But we've really just been met with support, and it's been great so far. Okay, so getting into the, the actual dashboard, right? Real quick, I do want to show you this kind of basic pyramid of Invisio reporting, just to show you that the public dashboard there at the top is kind of like the tip of the iceberg for our reporting. Staff review their updates quarterly. And if there does need to be an update to that, you know, revision to those updates, they'll put that in. We have monthly reports that are automated to go out to staff. We have quarterly reports that are automated to go out to city management as well as department leadership. But all of those steps, all of them stack on top of each other to get us to that public dashboard that the community and city council is able to see. So what is the, the public dashboard? It's transparency and accountability tool. It displays the plan in a way that's, that's accessible and easy to navigate through. And I think it's more intuitive than a, you know, PDF or a couple of hundred-page document that you're flipping through. It presents it in a way where it's not really linear. You don't have to read page 1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera. And you can kind of just choose your own adventure, which, which when I show it here in a minute, we'll see. It provides progress updates, narrative status updates, progress percentages, color-coded statuses. We can include performance measures in it, and you can embed anything that's embeddable on public websites, images, videos, et cetera. We did send out an email to city council notifying and providing access to the public dashboard. If you remember, it's housed on our Transparency and Accountability page on the public website. So it has been kind of soft-launched for the last, I want to say, close to a month now. But a press release is going out to kind of hard-launch it today. So I'm going to go ahead and hop into the actual dashboard now. Okay, so here is the homepage of the dashboard. Of course, we have, you know, beautiful mountains in the background, obligatory for Las Cruces, we have to. Here at the top, you have the full plan readout. So this little wheel here on the left gives you the percentages of the overall plan status. You have them listed here and then defined here. So, you know, what's the difference between a major disruption or some disruption? It's defined here so that, so that we're clear on what each of these means. And actually, before I continue, I do want to mention one thing. That as I'm going through this, I'm really just more going to talk about the functionality of the dashboard and walk you through how it works, and not so much the specific percentages, the specific action updates. Just not really the intent of today's agenda item. So here on the right, you have the overall progress of the plan. This progress percentage is about completion. So it's saying that there is X amount percentage progress completed of the plan. We scroll down a bit, we can see, you know, basic introductory text of what the city strategic plan is. We have the vision statement that Shrijana was mentioning earlier here. A little bit discussing that connection over to the comprehensive plan. And then we have our themes. So the comprehensive pla, or sorry, the strategic plan has six themes. We have community prosperity, education, community services, environmental sustainability, capital improvement and infrastructure, communication involvement and follow-up, and public safety. On each of these, if you hover over, you can actually see the progress. So here, it just pops up, this little blue bar. For each one, you can see the progress of each theme. And then here, similar to that kind of overall at the top, you can see the status percentages for each theme again. So the way Invisio works is that you click and you drill down further and further into the plan with more and more detail. So if we click there on community prosperity, it has a quick description here of what topics are included within community prosperity. And we have our progress percentage and the statuses, the kind of status distribution, you could call it. And then below, we have a list of all of our goals that are nested under that theme. And similarly, we have the progress percentages listed, and then the status distributions for each of those. So just so that everyone understands kind of how these numbers are coming about, let's just say hypothetically that you only had two goals right here, and one of them was 100%, and one of them was 0%, then your theme percentage would be 50%. If there is four of them, three of them were at 100%, one was 0%, then it'd be at 75% for the overall theme. So it's rolling up, they're all equally weighted, and it's just calculating it that way. And it is the same thing for these statuses here on the right. So if we go ahead and drill a little bit further down, we go a little bit further down into the goal level, now we can see all of the actions that are contributing to this goal. And same format, if there's a progress percentage, it's listed here, and then statuses are listed here on the right. And then we can drill down one more level, and this is where we actually see the updates from city staff. So we have progress highlights. This is the section where staff can highlight successes of city staff, of the organization, or of the work that we're doing with community partners, and really give a good overview of where we are on this action for the community, for city council, right? We also have this little section here that says "issue". This is where we can transparently and clearly write out and have everyone to see what issues we're facing in order to implement that action. You also have a section for next steps. You have a section that says "date". One key thing, that's when the update was put in. Just because the date is a little older doesn't mean that it's out of date. These are reviewed quarterly by staff. If it hasn't been updated in a while, then that's because the staff member has deemed that there's not further updates at this time. And then finally, you'll have little checklist items here sometimes. This is just showing key items that have been completed that contributed to this action. You see the status up here, and if there was a progress percentage for this particular action, it would just be listed right here in the same way that it has been in the rest of the platform. So that is the basic functionality of going up and down, drilling down into the plan, and where you find the information. This here is the only place that you'll find details defined by city staff. The rest of it is calculated percentages and status percentages. But it's not the only way that you can navigate through here. So if a community member or yourselves comes in here, it's also searchable, so let's just say that you're interested in economic development overall, then it's going to shoot out anywhere where economic development is mentioned in the dashboard. Or if you want to do something more specific, like mobile integrated health, you can see where it's specifically called out. But an important piece of this, I think, is that it's not just searching the actual action language, the plan. It's also searching the status updates from staff. So I just searched Roadrunner, and you see that the action doesn't actually have Roadrunner written in it, but that's because it's down here. So it does actually search the full status updates from staff. So that's a really neat feature built into there. I think, kind of parting thoughts on this, I think the more intuitive way of interacting with the plan, that drill-down, is a really important bit. But I think what I want to leave you with on this is that this demonstrates how we can get into this nitty-gritty details of specific projects, and then we can really clearly see how one action, chipping away at all of these actions, contributes up to the goal, that contributes up to an entire theme, and ultimately, the overall plan, and moving towards the overall community vision. I think making that connection and seeing that in real time like this is really valuable. Community members are basically able to come in and choose their own adventure, and whatever topic they're interested in, whatever's meaningful to them, they can come in here, search around, click around, and get information quickly, and essentially directly from staff, so, yeah. With that, I'm going to hop back over. So future improvements, internally, we'll be doing a lot more staff training, improving or increasing utilization, improvements to our internal reporting, which of course would result in improvements to our public dashboard. The integration of analytic visualizations, so just performance measures onto the public dashboard, we'll be trying to tackle that soon. And I do want to actually show a quick example of that. Qualifier on this one. I get the data for this. It's just, we had a dashboard internally that's been built with quality-of-life data, but we want to show you what it could look like. So this is just a basic dashboard that was put together. You can put whatever design colors you want on it. We can build out quite a few other types of visualizations in here, but you can see that it's interactive in the same way the rest of Invisio is. You can come in, open up, make them big, so you can actually read them. You can define targets, like for example here, so you see a threshold built into it for whatever measure that we're looking at. And this type of dashboard, or these individual visualizations, will embed directly onto here. So you could have them, you know, listed here for pertinent measures that we want to show. And we tend to have which ones we likely will be showing, but we'll be rolling that out kind of iteratively. And then finally, I do want to mention that in August, the 26th, we'll be having actually the first-ever report out on the city strategic plan. So of course, we're going to be utilizing Invisio reports, reporting internally to build that out for you all, and use the public dashboard to kind of facilitate that report out to you all. And as Trujana mentioned, that's in preparation for the city strategic plan update. With that, I'll stand for questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate your presentation, both of you. Any questions from, yes, go ahead, Councilor Matisse?
Thank you. Do you have plans, I mean, this is a great program. Do you have plans to coordinate with the educational systems, with elementary schools, junior high, and high schools, to actually make this available and educate them on this plan? Because the reason I say that, I may not spend as much time, only because, you know, the older group doesn't have a lot of time, and they want to spend in computers, but I think this would be an exciting feature to educate in all the schools. Because I think my grandson would just love to go through this, and the transparency, you know, the planning, and the analytics, and, you know, with artificial intelligence, what you could put into this plan would be fantastic. And I don't know if you plan that, but I think it'd be a great thing to bring to the principals, the education department, and make it part of their curriculum. It's a great, great plan. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, Councilor Matisse, that's not something I thought about, but that is a really great idea, and we'll give that some thought.
Thank you. I love that for all the municipal government nerds out there. They do exist, yeah. Yes, Councilor Corrin, another municipal government nerd.
I am, I am all about the graphs. Thank you again, Mark. I am all, super excited for these. I have one sort of question or hope or thing that I hope can be sort of integrated in some way. And I know that this is a lot for staff to be inputting this information, but thank you for this presentation, first of all. This is great. I am full-on municipal government numbers nerd, and I love any cool tools that make things transparent and accessible to folks. I'm wondering, I know that staff put in, I was reading some of the preliminary things that folks have put in, sort of about the progress and their assessments. I'm hoping that when, and again, I know this would be a whole nother level of sort of integration, but I'm hoping that if we have information related to the budget for each of these items, that that could be potentially part of the drilled-down information that's included. That is, like, if we were to fully implement this, it would cost this. And I know that that's a lot of information. We don't have that information in a lot of cases. But if that could be a part of it, I think that would also really be helpful for us when we consider saying, oh, I think we should do this, or I think we should do that. And having, if there is a place where we can say, oh, that would cost X amount of dollars, it would be really helpful, I think, for our conversations about how we move things forward, like, what does this mean in dollars? And I know that that's not always known, that's often an unknown quantity, but I think that that would be a helpful data point. If there's any way to integrate it, if, I realize that would be a huge separate project, but I just think it's helpful. Where that information exists, it would be great if it could be included in those narrative parts. And then, this part is not related to the dashboards necessarily, but it is related to planning. And I'm just doing this because we don't have councilor comments on work session days, but I do want to point out regional plans. There's a regional water planning session here on Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00 on the second floor. Not related to any of these things. I'm just giving a quick public reminder that it's happening here, and there will be a planned document someday created related to water. And the city is collaborating with the Interstate Stream Commission to help create that. So just as a note, if you care about that, this Wednesday from 3:00 to 7:00 on the second floor. So if you care about planning and being a nerd, I hope you'll come. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I love the plug, Councilor Corrin, and I do love the idea of adding a budget item. Yes, Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mark, Mr. Miller. I have a question for you. Choose Your Own Adventure, did you read those books?
Mayor Protam, Councilor Flores, I did quite a bit, yes. I think the Goosebumps, Choose Your Own Adventure was one of my staples.
Choose Your Own Adventure was like, wow. So thank you very much for presenting this adventure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll take an opportunity then just to, this, what you showed us today, that is all, that's what's going to be shown to the public, right? That's what's going to be accessible to the public?
Mayor Protam, it is currently accessible to the public. It's on the public website. The only thing I'll add is we did not, because I wanted to make sure everything was working correctly and we were totally ready, we did a soft-launch. So it was on the public website for anyone who's on there already on the transparency and accountability page. But we didn't do a hard press release, social media. That's, we're beginning that now. I think the press release, I don't think it's gone out quite yet. I think it'll go out maybe today. And then that'll be followed by social media, and also this unveiling to city council. But it is currently available to the public.
Okay, thank you. That's really exciting. I'm also mostly excited to see items like our energy transition plan at the utilities. Is that, those kinds of items are included on there?
Mayor Protam, there, I think some staff have made reference to other plans. But currently, the only plan actually in the platform and live would be the city strategic plan.
Okay, well, I think this was part of the strategic plan. So if it was, it would be included?
Mayor Protam, there's associated goals, but that plan itself would be separate, though.
Okay, got it. For the August work session, will you send us, with good enough time, any materials that we can come prepared for?
Not quite ready to say exactly just how much we'll be sending out prior to. The intent is to provide information prior, but just not sure how much at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions, members of the public?
Mayor Protam, if I may.
Oh, yes.
Barbara Bencomo, for the record. I just wanted to go back to the comment that Councilor Matisse made with respect to involving and educating the youth and, you know, wonderful, understanding a wonderful platform like this one. In the fall, we will be having the Developing Youth Leaders Program that's associated with our Neighborhood Leadership Academy, but it's targeted to high schoolers primarily and middle schoolers. But I think that understanding this tool and how we use it and clicking through it would be a great addition to the curriculums. I know Katrina will be putting that curriculum together, and that's for the two-week fall break. That's when it happens for our students. So appreciate the suggestion. That could be one way we could incorporate that idea. Thanks.
Thanks, Barbara. Any last words?
Mayor Protam, no, that's all for us. Thank you.
Okay. Wait, hold on, we have one more from Sonia. Sorry, Sonia, I didn't see you.
No, no, it's okay. Thank you, Mayor Protam, members of council, Sonia Delgado, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to say thank you to the PNI team for doing an exceptional job. I know you spent a lot of time and effort and many, many hours, so this is great, and we're really looking forward to it. I'd also like to send out a shout-out to all the directors and their teams who assisted in gaining all that information in a timely manner to make this happen. So thanks again. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. That was beautiful. Okay, thank you. And that is it. Entertained motion to adjourn.
So moved by Flores. Seconded by Corrin.
This is on the motion to adjourn the work session. Councilor McClure?
Yes.
Councilor Matisse?
Yes.
Councilor Graham?
Yes.
Councilor Corran?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
And the mayor is absent.